Good evening, everyone. I hereby call the Planning Commission hearing to order for Monday, August 4th. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, God indivisible.
We have, Commissioner Eggenberger is not here this evening, so Commissioner Lee will be acting secretary. Commissioner Lee, would you please call the role, the vote, the role?
The role.
Call the role, whatever you want to call.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner Eggenberger is not here? Correct, acknowledged.
That's correct. She gave prior notice.
Prior notice, okay. Commissioner Foster. Commissioner Janowski.
Here.
Commissioner Lee, present. Commissioner Singh.
Here.
Commissioner Watkins.
Here.
Commissioner Weber will not be here either.
Correct, he also gave prior notice.
Excellent. And Chairperson Suber.
I am here, thank you. And we also have Patrick and Erin from the township, and we have our consultant, Courtney Agrews, here this evening, so thank you for coming. Would anyone like to move to approve the minutes of July 7th?
Move approval, Madam Chair.
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Singh. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Minutes are approved. Anybody want to make a motion about the agenda?
For moved.
You move to accept the agenda?
Second.
All right. We have a motion to accept the agenda by Commissioner Singh and support by Commissioner Lee. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any further, or any noes? Geez. All right, very good. We have an accepted agenda. Patrick, how about any communications?
No communications to present at this point, but last week we had sent a couple of emails on some upcoming trainings, so any questions about those, just let us know.
Thank you. All right, we have two public hearings this evening. The first is about Canton Oaks on North Lots Road, and the second is about Abu Huraria. If I said that correctly, did I say it correctly?
Uh, fingers.
Okay, I got an 80% for that, thank you. Islamic Center of Michigan on DeWitt Road. If you are here and you'd like to say anything about anything besides those two items, please, we have a moment for public comment, so please feel free to come to the podium and make your comments known. But if you're going to speak about those two items, we'll take public comments during the public hearing. I don't see anyone jumping up to run to the mic, so I guess we will skip the public comment section and head right into the public hearings. Canton Oaks is our first item on the agenda. We are going to consider preliminary PDD for parcels, several parcels which are also known as, well, they're on the west side of Lots Road between Ford and Cherry Hill. The proposed use is a multifamily residential, including residences for adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities. The units may be owned or rented. A community building is also proposed. Patrick, please tell us more.
Sure, thank you. The applicant proposes to develop 280 units of multifamily housing, including a mix of adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities and neurotypical residents. The site is on a 24.7 acre site that's located on the west side of Lots Road between Ford Road and Cherry Hill Road and just south of Willow Creek. The site is illustrated in a map up on the screen here. This is an aerial photo that was taken sometime in April of this year, and as we can see across the street, Springs at Willow Creek, which was approved last year, is currently under construction, and this aerial photo shows that. So this development is directly across the street from the Springs at Willow Creek, and as shown on the aerial, I'm not really sure how show, how much it shows up with the vegetation, but Willow Creek itself runs on the north side of the property, and that runs from west to east. The proposed development would be 20 residential buildings with 14 two-bedroom units in each building, and it would also include a community building. And in a moment, I'll put the plans up on the screen, and we can review those. The site is currently zoned MRD, mid-rise development. Multiple-family residential use is a special land use in the MRD zoning district, and the proposed planned development district application is consistent with the zoning requirements for multifamily residential, with the exception of some modifications that are proposed in accordance with the PD standards of the ordinance. Whenever there is a planned development district, PDD is required to have definite benefits for the site and the community. The following three definite benefits are proposed for the development. The first is maintaining over 25% of the site is open space. There is currently over 64% of the site shown as open space on the plans, including preserving many wetland and woodland areas. The second is the architectural design of the buildings, and the third is creating a community building for residents of the development that will include a basketball court kitchen and several multipurpose rooms. Although those amenities are only available to residents and guests of the development, their use by Canton Oaks residents will lessen the use and impact on public recreation facilities. The project is proposed in two phases. Phase one consists of 11 residential buildings and the community building on the east side of the site, and phase two consists of nine residential buildings on the west side of the site. The locations of the phase lines are shown on the plans, but the specific locations will be determined at a future date because a lot of the phasing will depend on utilities and fire department access. So whatever phasing line is shown on the PD plans is subject to change in the future once we're at the point of site plan review. Up on the screen is an aerial photo. I'll close this out and see if we can make that a little bit bigger. It's an aerial photo of the site with development that imposed over the site, and in faint lines on this plan, it's hard to see, but some of the parcel lines are there to the north and to the south. It also shows some of the natural feature lines as well. The site is proposed to have as small a footprint as possible to fit the proposed development and to minimize the impact on natural features of wetland impacts and woodland impacts as For the schedule of regulations, the proposed development meets the setback requirements of the MRD zoning district for the 85-foot front yard setbacks, 85-foot side yard setbacks, and 85-foot rear yard setbacks, and minimum lot width of 60 feet. Residential buildings are allowed to be up to, up to eight stories in the MRD, which is, we've got, for example, the building at the southwest corner of Ford and Sheldon, senior apartment building, several stories high. That's an MRD-zoned site. So buildings can be pretty high in the MRD district, up to eight stories and 100 feet. The proposed residential buildings are four stories and just under 43 feet high, so it's well under the maximum height of the district. The minimum floor area of two-bedroom units in the MRD district is 800 square feet, and all units exceed that floor area. There are two modifications from the zoning ordinance that the applicant is requesting. The first is wetland setbacks. The zoning ordinance prohibits any grading or construction within 25 feet of a wetland. Less than 25 feet is proposed in many of the wetland areas that are proposed to remain. The existing and proposed wetland buffer areas are shown on the plans, and those areas would be finalized during final PDD review. At this point, we're at the stage of preliminary PDD review where we discuss the plan concept and the general layout. The final layout would be determined during final PDD review, so this PDD review is a two-step process. At each step, there's a public hearing that's required by the Planning Commission, and the township board takes action based on the Planning Commission's recommendations. And the Planning Commission can either accept the recommendation of the Planning, or the township board can accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission or take its own action. So the Planning Commission at both preliminary PDD and final PDD makes a recommendation to the township board, and then the township board takes final action on those applications. The second modification that's requested is in the number of parking spaces. The zoning ordinance requires 672 parking spaces based on the use. The applicant proposes 626 parking spaces. We have some analysis in our staff report regarding support for the proposed 626 parking spaces. For the access management and the traffic impact, the site shows two private road accesses proposed at Lots Road. Lots Road is a paved road under the jurisdiction of Wayne County. The roads are 27 feet wide and will widen to 30 feet at the entrance points, which would allow for dedicated right and left turn lanes outbound from the site. Also, the northern road, it's called Eagle Road. It's through an existing access easement that has a stub on the west end to provide access to the adjacent parcel to the west, which is landlocked. So on the survey, this drive on the north side of the site, there's actually an existing easement that's on the property for this drive, and that easement is for the benefit of the property owner to the west, so that the property owner to the west can have access. So in the development of the plans, the developer proposes to pave a private road throughout this easement area and then terminate the road at the lot line so that the property to the west can pull access directly from the proposed road, Eagle Road, on the subject site, and also within that access easement area. Regarding the traffic impact study, the traffic impact study is still under review by Canton Township, so there are many findings related to traffic impact in the PDD standards of the zoning ordinance that we're not able to yet make the affirmative findings on. And we're awaiting sending that to a traffic engineering consultant for review, at which time we'll have more detailed findings and analysis for the traffic impact study. So although our recommendation in our staff review letter is to postpone action on the application pending traffic engineering review by the township's traffic engineering consultant, we wanted to have the public hearing at this time because there are a lot of elements of the site that we wanted to have public comment on and Planning Commission comment on that could possibly give the applicant direction. If there are any prospective changes or recommendations from the Planning Commission at this point, the applicant can work on those while we're waiting on our traffic engineering consultant to commence review of the most updated traffic impact study. The traffic impact study, it's taking a little longer to do because Canton Township has recently been in the process of procuring a traffic engineering consultant to look at the intersection of Ford Road and Lots Road from a much more broad standpoint, looking not just at the current development proposals that are underway near that intersection, but to look at potential build-out scenarios around that intersection and to determine what types of road and intersection improvements would be required in the future to try to take a more proactive approach to development of that intersection. This is an area with a lot of undeveloped land and an area where there have been development applications proposed. There's been the Top Canton/Top Golf site on the north side of Ford, west of Lots. There's the current Canton Oaks site on the west side of Lots, and there's been a gas station application received at the southwest corner of Ford and Lots Road. So with a number of different developments in the area, the potential traffic impact on an intersection with some existing challenges, we're looking at kind of a long-range project to look at long-term solutions for that intersection. In the meantime, we have development applications that are under review, and our current traffic engineering consultant, Wade Trim, has reviewed the original traffic impact study. We may refer the updated traffic impact study back to Wade Trim because it'll take some time for Canton to complete its procurement and contract with the traffic engineering consultant that'll be looking broadly at that intersection, and we don't yet have a timetable on that. So we'll most likely be referring the updated traffic impact study to Wade Trim. It's just a matter of internally making a decision on the timing of that and getting that to Wade Trim. So we haven't yet done that, but we'll probably be doing that in the coming days or the next week or so, at which point Wade Trim will be reviewing the updated traffic impact study and will present some findings and recommendations based on that, at which time we'll give those to the applicant to either make modifications, or if it's ready to come back to the Planning Commission, doing so at that time. So we have a few comments about the traffic impact study, but really, at this point, we can't make any affirmative findings on it until our traffic engineering consultant has reviewed the study and provided their recommendations and analysis. Couple of the last items that I'll note for parking and loading, the ordinance requires 672 parking spaces, and there are 626 spaces proposed. According to the Parking Generation Manual from Institute of Transportation Engineers, the sixth edition of that manual, we looked at the weekday peak traffic for a multifamily development of a similar size, and it estimates, based on a number of traffic studies that are in that parking analysis, that a multifamily development of that size would have between 445 and 482 parking spaces during a weekday peak. So right now, our ordinance requires many more parking spaces than are required based on parking demand that's measured in the ITE book, and based on that, we recommend approval of 626 parking spaces for the site, and we would support a further reduction at the time of final PDD review and site plan review if the applicant was requesting even fewer parking spaces. Each of the residential buildings have parking garages on the ground floor, so that results in less impermeable surfaces throughout the site. There is some parallel and perpendicular parking on the site, which is easier to get to, especially for guests, but those units have attached garages as well, which is helpful in northern climate. Last two items I want to mention are the architecture and the utilities. For the architecture, the zoning ordinance requires 50% masonry, which is written as 50% brick, but oftentimes, stone veneer has been used in lieu of brick to meet the masonry requirements. The residential buildings have 50.9% stone veneer, and the community building has 57.9% stone veneer. So if the stone veneer is an acceptable substitute for the brick in terms of a masonry requirement, then the standard will be met. The remaining materials on the units are vertical siding, windows, and doors. Finally, with the utilities, the site will be connected to public water and public sanitary sewer. There is existing water main located on the east side of Lots Road, and there's a sewer pump station that's under construction on the east side of Lots Road concurrent with the development of Willow Springs. While the pump station is primarily constructed to service Springs at Willow Creek, it was designed to service a larger area on both sides of Lots Road, south of Willow Creek. Therefore, the sewer access to the site is planned. The plans also show a proposed layout for stormwater management, which includes a detention pond on the east side of the site along Lots Road. The pond is proposed to outlet to a storm sewer along the west side of Lots Road, which discharges to Willow Creek to the north. These stormwater comments, we'll defer to Wayne County and Canton Township Engineering Services Division at the point of site plan review. So that concludes our staff report. Our recommendation is to postpone action only so that we have time to review the traffic impact study with our traffic engineering consultant and make findings in accordance with Section 27.04-D13 of the zoning ordinance. We support all the other elements of the project as it's designed, but because we can't make affirmative findings on the traffic impact yet, we recommend postponing it pending review of the Canton Township Traffic Engineering Consultant letter. So that concludes our staff report, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Is the project sponsor here? Yep. All right. Would you like to add anything to what Patrick just told us about?
Bruce Michael with Three Oaks Communities. I just wanted to mention just a little bit of the history here. I don't think we had a chance to do that when we got rid of the corporate overlay zone. Our company does only things like this that include, every project includes housing for the developmentally disabled, and we have been working for the last nine months, would you say, with C3, a local nonprofit composed of parents of these adult children with ADD conditions, and it's been, I think, a very successful relationship so far. We've had many, many meetings and have, at this point, 26 ADD reservations, and I think 10 parents would like to live in one of the neurotypical units, as we call them. I'll just mention a couple of, and we have a couple of these representatives here, and they can speak about education on this if you guys would like to hear some more about what's happened and why this, why this occurs. I think what's really important, a couple of things we want to mention, though, points of clarification. This is fundamentally a for-sale project. There are, in some cases, most of our units for the ADD are two-bedroom units. That's usually the request that's made by the parents, and what will happen is kind of an organic rental situation where they will have a child that has a good friend who's also ADD, and they'll lease that, that other bedroom in the unit. So we're not making this an apartment. We want this to be a for-sale. We want that ownership concept, one, not just for ADD people, but in general in the entire project. It's a different, kind of a different group of people that you have when you have that. The other, the other thing I would mention briefly is that we have structured our buildings so that they can be a mixed building, which includes ADD on floor two, or a fully neurotypical building. We usually seek to have 20% to 25% of our units be, especially for the ADD, and the rest to be for the neurotypical public. The design of the buildings is such that if there's not a mixed building, that it's all neurotypical, that second floor, instead of being two-bedroom ADD units, becomes one-bedroom bath and a half units for the neurotypical public. So we have a combination of ones, twos, and threes throughout the project. I would say the residents of the building will be parked adequately. The ADD units, we generally prescribe one parking space per unit. Generally, a lot of them don't drive, but you do have caregivers and that kind of coming and going. And then all the other units, we've essentially got two parking spaces for a larger unit or one parking space for a one-bedroom unit within the buildings themselves, so that everything else on the outside can be event parking or, or guest parking, that sort of thing. The other thing we did when we did the parking figures that we estimated that were needed, we assumed that the community building was essentially a building open to the general public, and that there'd be parking demand generated because people would come in visiting. In general, that won't happen. This is a community-based structure for that community. However, there will be guests. We are working presently with the Special Olympics, and that's one of the reasons you see a, a large, I'll call it a sport court, essentially. It's the size for a basketball court, and we know we're going to have some visitors and people coming in, so we wanted everybody to be aware that there'd be some of that, but nothing like it would be if it was, say, an old gym, or, you know, one of the, one of the commercial type of recreational or sports-type facilities. Anything else I need to mention? I think I covered, covered all the kind of the points I wanted to, but I'm here to answer questions if you have any, and certainly would like Fiona to come up if you need to ask her any questions.
Thank you very much. We need to open a public hearing, so I'm going to entertain a motion.
I move to open the public hearing, Madam Chair.
All right. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Singh and support by Commissioner Janowski to open the public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Awesome. Would anybody from the public like to speak about this project? Mr. McCoslin, good to see you.
So, good evening. I'm Dan McCoslin. I'm just to the north of, on 2011 Lots Road. Yeah, this is a, this is a nice project for the area, there's no doubt about it, but I see what's happening is, seems to me we're going to make the same mistakes we made 37 years ago. We're starting to worry about the traffic, and we're starting to bring this, this internal pressure. You know, the road was paved quite a few years ago. We missed opportunities for utilities. We tried on our own to get utilities. We expended over $100,000, we lost, we didn't get utilities. Now we're looking at utilities. Now we're looking at infrastructure. Now we're looking at, to me, it's just the corporate overlay being relived again. We got to get out of the way of private development. Private development knows how to develop. This gentleman knows how to develop. People that are coming into the area, they know how to develop, and now we're going to start screaming about the traffic. For the longest time, I've been there since that road was dirt. That was a dirt road, it was impassable. Nobody would go on that road. Now it got paved. It's a racetrack for a cut-through, for the community, and some people think it should stay a racetrack, but others have a vision. This gentleman here, he's got a vision for the community. Number one, I did this concept 24 years ago. I provide a group home in Canton for individuals who are developmentally challenged. It's a really nice thing. It's a nice thing to do. I can't tell you how many, how many parents are so grateful, they've got place for their, you know, these are all different people from different walks of life, and they're, they're terribly underserved by our local government and our state government. They're left on their own, and it's these organizations that pick up the pieces, and it's people like me who contribute to that. And they say, "Look, I built them a house 24 years ago because they were displaced." They were displaced by another development here in Canton. They had no place to go. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of people that'll talk to you about this, but I see we're making, again, we're doing the same mistake. We're talking about traffic and engineers and everybody. Let's just let it work itself out. Let's let it work itself out. It'll work itself out. You know, MDOT talks about the road. MDOT talks about the traffic. They talk about the Boulevard. They talk about, it'll work itself out. If it's got to be improved, it'll be improved over time. You know, when I got there, there was no light at Lots Road, and it was dirt. Can you imagine that? No light, but it worked itself out. As everything came in, it worked itself out. Now we finally got interest sparked in the area. The corporate overlay is somewhat gone. It's still up on my end. There's no relief on my end. Now it's a business overlay. So from the creek on down, there's no overlay. I think that's wrong. Overlay should be gone, and now we're replacing it with all these other nuances, PDDs and traffic studies, and all I see is that pressure, again, building. This is the same thing that built 37 years ago. If you can go back and look at the notes, the corporate overlay was to stop development. It was a huge mistake. It was the government got in the way of the businessman. That never works. Let it work itself out. This gentleman knows how to build things. People that are coming on the corner by us, they know how to build things. Top Golf knows how to build things. Chick-fil-A knows how to build things. Portello's Restaurant, they know how to build things. They don't need somebody in between, because what's going to happen? Poof.
Thank you. I think you got a little extra time there because I didn't start my timer right away.
Thank you for that extra time.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to say anything about the project? Sure. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Fiona Duskis. I'm here with Kristen Bros.
Can you use the, get a little closer to the mic because it doesn't, it's not picking you up.
Sorry. My name is Fiona Duskis. I'm here with Kristen Bros. We represent Compass Community Collaborative, which Bruce mentioned. We are the nonprofit that is supporting the Canton Oaks community. We are actually parents of individuals with intellectual disabilities. I kind of want to broaden a little bit about what was just discussed, too, is we actually have no choice. There aren't any other places. There are rental places that you all are aware of in Canton that are being built. There's some in Washington that are being built. There is not enough options. So we are trying to work within the Wayne County area to make sure that there are options for people who can buy, people who can rent, and we want to reduce this down to as low a price as possible and get as many people in. You know, we're hoping to get at least 75 to 80 individuals in this location, and I'm one moving in as well, so we really want this to be a really amazing campus for Canton and really show what we're doing well in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Move to close the public hearing, Madam Chair.
Second.
All right, we have support by Commissioner Watkins and, or, motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Lee to close the public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Awesome, thank you. This sounds like a really wonderful project, so thank you very much. I'm going to start with some comments from Commissioner Janowski. Would you like to say anything?
Yeah, I have a few observations. I do like this development quite a bit. It looks like it's changed a little bit. You know, I do have concerns with the elevations. I don't see anything with that. I'm just, things to watch for with the floodplains. I'm just, things to watch for with the flood plain. The parking enclosed on, on the first floor, is that a block structure or concrete structure, the first level?
No. It'll be, it'll be a frame structure.
Okay. So there's a general concern there with the structure and if, you know, accidents happen all the time and how that would implicate the overall structure. Another thing that I noticed with this, typically when you have parking garages, you have to have 50% of your outside open to open air.
No, this is an enclosed garage under the Michigan Building Code.
Okay. Typically, that's not allowed, or do you have to have a mechanical system?
It'll have a mechanical ventilation system.
Okay. And then I like what I saw from the parking or the, the traffic study so far. So I support this general concern. Yeah, someone hit something, people upstairs, you know. That's it.
We're not doing it on dry, as drywall on the inside. It's going to be more solid than that.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Cruz.
Can we pull up the site plan? I've got a few things here. So the two, the two roads, they're two-way, correct?
Correct.
They're not one-way?
Yes.
Okay. Do we know how those line up with willows across the street?
The north one lines up directly with the willows.
Okay.
So it's a T intersection, or a cross-intersection.
And you, you were given those plans so you could line that up?
Correct.
Okay. Have you met with Wayne County yet or submitted for conceptual review or anything?
For what?
Wayne County?
For the roads or for stormwater?
Roads.
We have not.
I'm going to alert you, there, there's going to be a lot of improvement. If you look across the street at their plan, they made them do a substantial amount of road improvements. And with yours, they'll likely make you connect, put a full lane in between your, your two approaches. The other project has an emergency access, so it's not a main access. They didn't make them do that, but I'm, I'm just alerting you that Wayne County, I would get that submittal in because I, I think it'll be more improvements than what you're expecting.
Are you referring to wanting to put a Boulevard in between the inbound and the outbound road of the drive?
No. No, I'm talking about...
On Lott's Road itself?
On Lott's Road itself. Tapers, D cell lanes, and especially with a two-drive configuration, they may make you put a full lane in between there.
A left-turn lane.
Well, not necessarily a left-turn lane, but again, that, that is an option. Given the two developments, this, this development never came on, so I don't think they made willows put in the left-turn lane, but now with this, it may be a better option. That's why, I guess I'm encouraging you to go to Wayne County because Willow is, is not constructed fully yet. And I'm bringing this up because there's going to be a lot of traffic now. And despite you saying, let it solve itself, things don't just solve themselves. We, we bring them up so they can be addressed because it's our roads. The other thing I have is... Do you have a temporary drive in the middle? Does that go away or does that stay?
Can you move this to, there we go.
Yeah, in the middle of the development.
The way we're going to construct this, hopefully you can hear me, I'll speak loudly. Where we're going to construct this...
If you could...
Essentially a...
Sir, the, the problem is if, the recording won't pick you up?
Got it.
So nobody can watch it on YouTube, but...
So our intention to, to construct this is at a, I'll call it at a sidewalk level. So it becomes essentially a plaza once we get done with it. The idea is that it provides us with loop access if we phase the, the, the improvements on the site, so that the fire, the fire department has a loop access in the interim. So our intention is to construct it, we also haven't discussed this, but one of the, one of our intentions also is to provide, I'll call, speed tables throughout the development that would line up with... Crossing right there, so that it's going to cause the traffic to have to slow down.
You talking about speed bumps?
It's not really a bump, it's a table. It's, it's larger, and what happens is the entire vehicle gets on, on top of it and goes down, and the table's at the same level as the, as the sidewalk, the crosswalk itself.
Yeah, like in Ann Arbor.
Similar, yeah. You've seen it in other places, but we're certainly going to have to talk to engineering and everybody else to agree to that, but it's one of our intentions to make sure that it's extremely pedestrian-friendly from the perspective that some of our IDD individuals, you know, will walk, but may not be, you know, as cognizant of traffic, going through traffic as, as, say, others. And that's part of why we have an interior loopway, so we can make sure those people can walk to the community building and around the site without even having to cross that road.
So the temporary access drive, does that go away or does it stay?
It stays, but what it is, is it's like a big sidewalk.
But you can drive on the sidewalk? Or are you going to shut it out?
I mean, for temp, you know, for purposes of, of emergency access in the middle, yes. But afterwards, we're going to want to shut it up. We may put bollards up or something like that to make sure people just don't start, don't start driving.
Well, if you put bollards up, an emergency vehicle can't go through there.
It'd be spring bollards.
Yeah. I, I bring it up because it's a good design, having that and keeping it.
Yeah. Our intention is not to make that go away.
Because it's a long way for an emergency vehicle to cut through, you know? So...
The intention, though, is to design it like it's a great big sidewalk, so that it doesn't feel like a roadway through the middle of the site.
And then ADA spaces, I was looking at these, let's say, for instance, the community building should be ADA accessible. Where do I park if I'm in a wheelchair? What's the closest one?
There's one right there.
So right there, I got to walk across the drop-off for food trucks to get there. Why not put it, I guess, right, no, right, where, yeah, like, one of those spaces, so you don't have to cross?
Sure.
Yeah.
Good idea.
I guess what I'm saying is, I would look at every public access point where people are going to access it and plan your ADA accordingly, and take a closer look at it.
Certainly.
Do you have parallel parking on those roads?
Yes, if you go to, to the north, the north road, we have it as parallel parking, and that was actually discussed with the fire department. In fact, it was even suggested by them at one point.
Oh, okay. Outside, yeah, that's fine.
And we, we actually, they were a lot, willing to allow it within the drive lanes, and we decided, no, we'd rather have it outside of the drive lanes. So there's no concern about, you know, traffic.
I guess what I'm asking, on the south side, can I park there, right across, right there?
No.
So there's going to be no parking there?
Right. It's on the north side, only in this.
Perfect. So an emergency vehicle will be able to drive through. I guess that's my point.
Yes, and, and this is the full 27 feet.
It is. I saw it.
From the edge of the parking to the other curb.
Yep.
So, yeah, we, we said, let's, let's make sure there's no issue with that.
All right. Two more things. Patrick, you said the sanitary was modeled and could handle this development, or that has to be studied still?
It was, it was modeled a few years ago when Springs at Willow Creek was starting their site engineering. The area south of Willow Creek did not have sanitary sewer, and as part of their project, they needed to build a pump station.
Right.
And in the township's review of it, the pump station had to be large enough, not just for their development, but for a district. And so a sewer district was created, and the sewer district is essentially along Lott's Road, south of Willow Creek and north of the ITC Tower. That's an area where there's a gap where there's no sewer, sanitary sewer. So the pump station is under construction. It's going to be sized to accommodate the number of units that were modeled when the district was created. And because there are multifamily districts within the sewer district, there were a lot of units that were modeled to make sure that the pump station could handle it.
Okay.
So it should be able to handle not just this development, but other developments that come up within the sewer district.
So OHM does your modeling? Or is it WHM?
I know one does water, one does sewer. I don't know which does which.
I guess I would, I just would double-check the sanitary because the pump station was specific to a master plan, and this is a heavy-use development. That's all I'm bringing up. Yeah.
Yeah, we'll look at that. Before this was rezoned out of the corporate park overlay, it had a underlined development zone of mid-rise development. So I think this particular site may have been modeled for even more units than what are on the plan, just to be conservative with the sewer district.
Yep. Last thing is, typically, detention is not allowed in the front setback. And I'm not sure how our ordinance is written with this, if this weren't a PDE. Do you know?
We don't have setback requirements for detention basins, so they can be in a front yard, as long as there's enough room around them for landscaping. But occasionally, depending on their locations and the presence of standing water, sometimes some of them have fences around them just to create a barrier. And that's something they'll, they would have to figure out during site plan review if that would be a requirement.
Yeah, I just didn't know if, I'll be honest with you, I didn't look at the ordinance that, if it allowed it, but I've, designing a lot of projects, it's prohibited in a lot of municipalities, but...
Yeah, I've seen in some where it is, where it's not something that wants to be seen, but if it's well landscaped and well cared for, it can be an amenity, but we would just have to determine whether a fence around it would be a requirement.
I, I don't like fences around ponds. I, they're ugly, you know? I mean, if you can avoid it, I would...
We've sized it to be able to do the one-in-five for the Wayne County requirements, and there's an adequate, adequate volume there.
Okay. That's all I got.
Thank you. Commissioner Foster.
Thank you. I think this is a wonderful project. I think, you know, we would love to have it in the community. I do share the concerns about traffic. Even before I read the staff report where traffic was mentioned, I was like, there's a lot going in in this small location. I don't believe in the let-it-work-itself-out theory. I think that's how we got some of the most dangerous intersections on Ford Road as it stands. I do think there is wisdom in a traffic study and seeing how all of these projects interact with each other. One of the things that we hear from residents over and over again is the volume of traffic on Ford Road and residents avoiding Ford Road and with us not necessarily knowing what's happening with the Boulevard project, even though it's not going to go on this section of Ford Road. I do think that it's all connected. So I do think there is wisdom in the traffic study to see how all of these projects interact with each other. But I do, I think this is a great project. It would be great for the community.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee.
Just, I'm just trying to understand a couple of things. One, the road, I saw it ending. What is it connecting to that one that just is a stub? Where is that going? Yeah, that. Where does that do? I mean, is it capped or something, or is that a future development? That's really what I'm asking.
Could be.
We get a lot of this in Canton, I noticed.
Yeah. What's unique about this is, so it, it's hard to see on this, on this plan, but this is a parcel line, this black line.
Okay.
And the parcel to the west is actually landlocked. It doesn't have frontage on any roads.
Got it.
And so many years ago, there was an easement created along, across the subject parcel on the applicant's parcel, so that this landlocked piece to the west could access Lott's Road. So the intent there is to build this private road within the existing easement and then stub it, so that the property to the west, they can not only use the access easement that is on the adjacent property here, but it would be paved, so they would be able to access it right away. Could be a potential future development or some other reason to use it for access.
Okay. Thank you. The other question, it, it's interesting. I'm trying to understand your, your model. You have, do you call it IDD? What was the term you used?
It's intellectual and developmental disabilities. It's actually a legal, a legal term that's used by the Medicaid people.
Okay. The reason I'm asking is, you know, I know people that would benefit from this, so I like the project tremendously. I'm thinking, did I actually hear you say parents and the, the youngster could actually live in a unit? Is that what you...
No, actually, what happens is, is the, the units that are designated for IDD can only have IDD individuals in them, and we'll actually de-restrict those units, so they can never be taken out of that inventory.
Okay.
Because 20 years down the line, it's privately-held development. It's got a separate association.
You're thinking ahead of me. Right.
We're also so sensitive to it that we're structuring the HOA so that there's an equal representation on the board of, of, of IDD and neurotypical individuals, even though the populations aren't anywhere near the same size.
Got it.
So what we refer to is, is that several of the parents have expressed a desire to buy a separate unit for themselves in the development. So their, their child has independence, and they have some independence, but they're also very close.
Okay. That, yeah, I like that. Yeah, you thought it out. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Singh.
Yeah, hi. Nice project, definitely like it. The only question, again, for that Eagle Road, which is connecting to a future development. So we don't know what development is coming there and what kind of traffic that development will generate. And we have parking on that street on the other side. That's the only concern I have. Once that area is developed, the traffic going through this road and people parking on the other side and crossing the road, I'm not sure if that is a good idea to have parking on that side.
So, so even if we didn't improve that roadway, there's still an existing easement here, you know, that's recorded. So they have a legal right to make their own driveway over that property if we didn't make it. We just said, well, we can't put a building on it or anything else because someday there's going to be a road there, so we decided to say, let's make our road there. I agree, the concern would be is, is this looks like a racetrack. So that's why we want to do the traffic calming devices, where we're doing those speed tables I talked about, where you drive down the road, the road elevates six inches, so it's even with the crosswalks that are there. I'd actually make them out of concrete, so that basically it really feels like a sidewalk. Cargo is completely up on that and goes down and slows down, you know, activity quite a bit, kind of thing. So that's, that would be our intention to avoid that kind of a situation, even without the development next door. You know, you see a straight line, you want to go somewhere. People tend to, you know, shove that gas pedal down, so it's our concern to be able to try to, try to minimize that as much as we can.
Yeah, that's my only concern with... So that parking is on the easement, so that you're using the easement?
See the dot, dash lines there?
Yeah.
Those are the, those are the easement. So the parking's actually off the easement.
It's off the easement.
Correct.
But it's on the other side of the easement?
Yes, in the, in that case, correct.
That's all. That's the only question.
Thank you. Commissioner Watkins.
Thanks so much. Mr. Michael, first of all, as a parent of an adult child with a cognitive disability, this is much needed in Canton. My daughter's 26 years old, and again, I understand completely what it's like to look again, I understand completely what it's like to look for someplace for them to be able to live. There's another group that's got a proposed development in Canton as well, so it is much needed now. To the real estate, again, I won't rehash. There's a lot happening at Ford and Lots these days, period. Just a ton. So be it multifamily, be it commercial. Look, parking is going to be a part of, not parking, excuse me, traffic is going to be a part of it. It just needs a deeper dive. This is, we don't want to create another, you know, Hagerty at Ford or, or, you know, or Sheldon or, or Lilly. We just want to make sure that this gets right. So traffic's important. I think this should be something that has a second look. This is a big site. These are a lot of units. And my first question is, I see you've kind of consolidated and clustered the IDD units to the, I think the B, C, D, and K building, right in the middle of the site. So I don't, was that strategic in putting those buildings? Or is that some phasing that you're doing? I think I saw the IDD was on the B, C, D, and K buildings. So it sounds like they're in the center.
So first of all, the decisions have all been made with the parents. And one of the big concerns they wanted is that community building becomes a community center for them. It's a 23,000 square foot building, I think. It's got, there's a lot of rooms, a lot of ability for people to do all kinds of different things in that building. And so they wanted to be close to that building for starters. The second was to be able to traverse to that building or to other buildings where their friends might be without having to cross the loop road itself. So that's why we've got the IDD kind of inside of the, of the, of the loop of the road. We have designed the building so that the footprint, whether it's a mixed IDD and neurotypical building or a fully neurotypical building, are identical in footprint. So we can mix and match. We just picked that to begin with. We're looking at overall that there's probably going to be something like between 50 and 60. They have to be multiples of seven, so 56, 63 total units. And that would be eight or nine buildings overall that would have seven of those dwelling units on the second floor that are IDDs. And they'll all, I expect them all to be somewhere in the middle, kind of a thing.
Got it. So let's talk about your Saline project and like how it's operated thus far. A lot of news on the Saline project. And you were saying how it operates. And I heard you say fundamentally, this is a for sale development. I'm assuming these are all condoed. And you're going to have a parent that purchases it for some intellectually disabled child. But the second part of it was, as we dig deep into the, the financial operations, you said that at some point possibly a friend would lease from the parent who, who owns the unit. Is this how the, is this the model from the Saline and all the other areas? And then how's, how's that worked? Like, how is that, has that been productive for those parents that are there in Saline? I know you sold it out, I'm pretty sure. But I'd like to know how that model is working.
So probably a better indicator is the two projects that we have underway in Rochester Hills that include some single family homes that have suites in them and then multifamily product that's like this. And in that case, there's been another nonprofit group called Rochester Housing Solutions that is, that we've worked directly with. And we now have, I think there's a total of, I think it's 38 total units or people that'll be served. And there we've got two bedroom condos and we actually have some parents have got together, maybe even co-buy the condo together where they've got two individuals. Or one buys the condo and the other comes in and, and they lease. And again, only IDD individuals that are again, under the legal definition of IDD according to Medicaid and with a doctor's, a doctor's opinion of that, does that happen. So that, that's, that has, right now, I can tell you that's active underway where we have people that are doing, that are doing that up in Rochester Hills. I don't believe that happened in, I don't believe that happened in Saline. We did have somebody who did purchase a unit from us and their child died. And then they leased it to somebody else, another IDD individual. And then that IDD individual, eventually the parents of that person bought that unit from them.
Got it. And the last point I want you to recognize is that I, as we all know that, you know, there's a, there's a continuum of, of intellectual disability. Some do drive. And I think I want you to really consider that there, there should be some parking somewhere for those who are IDD that, that may, and I know it's, I think you said in the garage, that would be their designated spot. But I just want to make sure that there's, it's not an afterthought that there might be some, I don't know, some designated on street for those who might be in the IDD clusters within the framework of the site. That's all I have. Thank you so much.
So in the, in the parking level, can we go to the parking level, Patrick? Things a little short for me, you know?
Yeah, a lot of people have that issue. Yeah.
So here, here's a typical, one of the typical buildings. There's a total of 14 units in the building. And there's seven IDD units and seven neurotypical units on the third and fourth floors. The third and fourth floors are really, they're townhomes, essentially interior townhomes. And there are basically one parking space per IDD unit in this area and two for the other, each one of the other units.
Got it.
Within the building themselves, we actually have designated one per. And then I would imagine if there's, if there's a driver, and there are, if higher functioning people at part-time jobs, going to college, all kinds of different things, they would, I would see them take, deciding to take that space. And then if there's caregivers in the build that are coming in the building or helping out, then they can go obviously on the, the street side parking, kind of a situation. So yeah, we've, we did, we know that there are some. So we haven't sat there and said, there's zero. We, we've applied one per.
Madam Chair, I know I said last thing if I could, one last point. And that is, if I'm not mistaken, I did see second floor balconies in elevation. I just want to know the efficacy behind it.
Second floor balconies on the neurotypical buildings. If there's IDD units, they don't have balconies.
Got it. Thank you.
And the reason for that is safety factor. Concern about safety.
Well, this is an amazing development, in my opinion. I, I have nothing to add to what my colleagues have already said, other than, well, one thing I do on the site plan, I guess, sometimes traffic calming is, is also effective by pulling in curbs a little closer some, or, or making the road curved. So maybe that's, I don't know if the easement requires that it be right there straight. Is that why you've made that north road straight?
There's, a lot of it is that. But also, I think if we look at the, the limitations of the light of the site itself, there's a lot of wetlands on the site that are mostly around the outside edges. So we have to stay away from the outside edges. On this north side, the story that happened was we, we flagged all the wetlands. We went to Eagle and did a site walk with them and pre-application conference on site. And originally, what we had done was we had, there's a couple of upland pieces that are wooded up here in the northwest corner of the site, and we had our detention there. And so he said, what I'd really like you to do, is he said, we've got this really low quality Fragmities-filled open wetland that's out in the field here. It's just kind of a low area. It's nothing really special. He said, I would rather make a trade with you. Leave that alone and I'll, I'll swap you. You know, I'll, I'll not count that as a wetland. You put your detention there. The detention will be done as a wet facility and will have edge plantings and ICS doing some interpretive signage and that sort of thing around it. And a lot of our IDD people and stuff will, will use that as one of their, one of their things that they do. So that's kind of what went into that. But that whole north side up there, other than back here in this wooded area, that's flood plain and floodway in the corner and it's all wetland. So we're kind of, you end up with this, there's only a couple of little bumps up here that you can actually do something with. So along with that and the easement, we end up with this, this straight line that, that happens. But we're, our parents are with us all the way through this and they, you know, we're all concerned about making sure we have the safety thing. So that's why the speed table thing, because no matter, even on this side, we're curving and stuff. And we've got parking spaces backing out and everything else, which I know tends to slow people down. Because if you feel a constriction, the natural tendency is slow down, kind of a thing. And again, if there's, you know, we, we have, if there's ways to do islands or other things that we can help further restrict that, we certainly want to do that. But, because we're very, very sensitive to these, shoot, can be neurotypical. And what happens is, is if you're 16, you're crossing the road going.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. We've, we've all seen that. And driving, driving like that too. But anyway, that's a different issue.
The difference is you got 3,000 pound, you got 3,000 pounds of hurtling death if you're driving like that.
Exactly, exactly. So I, I, I can't wait to see this go up. And I think it's going to be a wonderful asset to our community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. So does anyone want to make a motion to, per the agenda? On page 15.
So, so Wade Trim has not reviewed the traffic study yet. Is that correct?
The initial traffic study Wade Trim did review and had some comments. And the planning, or the applicant revised the traffic study to address some of Wade Trim's comments. That revised traffic study has not yet been sent to Wade Trim because we were determining whether to have Wade Trim review the revised one or to have our traffic consultant looking at the intersection as a whole, review it from here. So we haven't officially determined how we're going to have that revised traffic study reviewed. But I think we're most likely going to have Wade Trim do it since it'll take a little while longer to have the other consultant onboard. And Wade Trim's already reviewed this once. So, but to answer your question, the most recent revised traffic study has not yet been reviewed by a traffic consultant.
Okay.
Can I, can I add one thing to that? When we found out about the fact that the engineering department wasn't recommending this go forward because of the combined traffic impact, we asked for a meeting. We had a, we ended up having a meeting with our traffic consultant, township engineering staff, their traffic consultants. And basically, all of us had determined if our project alone went forward, it was a signal timing issue. The main thing, biggest concern that everybody saw was a number of left turn movements going northbound on Lots Road to get essentially to the freeway. There would not be enough capacity for that. And, and when you added up the other projects, then suddenly signal timing wouldn't cut it. And I think that's what drove the township to say, let's take a little harder look at this. We stand ready to be involved with a consortium of developers and pay our proportionate share, we'll call it. We don't know what that is exactly, toward whatever those improvements ought to be in terms of, of dealing with the impacts that we, that we have.
Also, I think Wayne County is going to require that traffic study. And you said you haven't submitted.
We haven't submitted to Wayne County. First, we want to make sure that we're not, you know, we have something that, that's worth submitting. That'll be our next step.
Madam Chair, I'll take the motion there.
Okay.
Got it. And I move the postponed action on the preliminary PDD application. Application number 049-PDP-8531 pending review of the most recent traffic impact study by Canton Township Traffic Engineering Consultant to determine if the standards of Section 27.04 D13, the zoning ordinance, ordinances, or ordinance are met.
Support.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Foster. Any further discussion? All right. Commissioner Lee, could you please call the vote?
So, just so I'm clear, it's yes to postpone. Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Sorry.
Oh, thank you.
Apologize. Commissioner Cruz, let me go again.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Janowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee, yes. Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins.
Yes.
Chairperson Zuber.
Yes.
All right. It's unanimous.
We will table this. Hopefully, we can see it again soon. Yeah, thank you. All the best. All the best. All right. Excellent. Please educate me on how to properly pronounce this, since I got it 80% right. So it's Abu Hurayra? Is that correct?
That one I'll actually defer to the applicant. I actually, I don't think I would get 100%.
I was trying, yeah. Gentlemen, I want to pronounce the name of your community properly. So please help me. Well, how do you say it? Abu? Hurayra. Okay, okay. Thank you. All right. I will attempt to say it that way from now on. So item number two on our agenda is Abu Hurayra Islamic Center of Michigan, where we're considering special land use for parcel number 134-03-0099-000, which is also known as 4801 DeWitt Road. The property is located on the east side of DeWitt, south of Michigan Avenue, between Belleville Road and South Sheldon Road. The proposed use is a religious institution. Patrick, please tell us more.
Sure, thank you. The applicant proposes to establish a mosque in the existing building at 4801 DeWitt Road, on the east side of DeWitt Road, south of Michigan Avenue. DeWitt Road is a cul-de-sac street that is located between Belleville Road and South Sheldon Road. The site is zoned LI Light Industrial and religious institutions are special land uses. The report says R1, but it should be LI zoning district. The subject parcel is 1.88 acres and it includes a vacant building, which was formerly occupied by Schwan Foods. The most recent approved site plan for the site was in 1996. And the applicant proposes to operate the site in accordance with that plan, with the exception of some parking lot restriping, notably on the east side of the building where there's a truck circulation area and some truck docks where, without the truck traffic anymore, some of that asphalt is proposed to be restripped as parking. As I noted earlier, religious institutions are special land uses in the LI zoning district, subject to requirements of Section 6.02U of the zoning ordinance. While religious uses in an LI zoning district are infrequent, industrial uses and religious uses can be compatible if they comply with the zoning ordinance standards for lighting, noise, et cetera. For example, Canton Christian Fellowship, which is located on the southwest corner of Joy and Rhonda Drive, is located in an LI district and is compatible with the surrounding industrial uses. So for those reasons, religious land uses are among several land uses that are special land uses in, in the LI Light Industrial District because there are special land uses because they, they warrant additional attention in terms of compatibility with surrounding land uses. Religious land uses are also special land uses in many of the residential districts for similar reasons. In, in this instance, it's more looking at potential impacts that industrial uses have on the religious institution. Just because if there are heavy industrial uses or incompatibilities, we want to review for those to see what they are and if they can be mitigated. First, for the schedule regulations and the dimensional standards, the plans comply with setback requirements of the LI zoning district for the front yard setback of 40 feet, minimum side yard setbacks of at least 15 feet on one side and at least 40 feet total, minimum rear yard setback 20 feet, and minimum lot width 60 feet. The existing building meets the required front side and rear yard setbacks of the district, as well as the minimum lot width of the district. Additionally, there are some site development standards in Section 6.02U that are specific to religious land uses that I'll get into right now. So first, in that subsection U, the site complies with the minimum lot width of 150 feet and minimum lot, I'll have to go back to it. There's a typo there in the report. The site meets the standards for the lot width of 150 feet, the parking setback of 15 feet, and the rear yard setback of 50 feet minimum, as well as the side yard setback on the south side of 25 feet. There are three areas of subsection U that the site doesn't meet. The first is subsection U requires that religious land uses have a minimum lot area of three acres. The site is 1.88 acres. And there are no minimum lot area requirements in the LI zoning district. Second, subsection U4 requires front yard setback of 50 feet and side yard setbacks of 25 feet. The building is 40.4 feet from the front lot line and 17.5 feet to the northern lot line. The LI zoning district requirements for those setbacks are 40 feet and 15 feet respectively. So the building meets the setback requirements of the LI zoning district, but not of subsection U. And third, subsection U5 requires frontage on a paved street that has a right of way of at least 86 feet for religious land uses. The right of way of DeWitt Road is 60 feet. And there are no minimum right of way requirements in the LI zoning district. So Section 6.02U is, is relatively unique. And I'll get into in a moment why. And, but the site was developed as an industrial land use, an industrial district. So it's somewhat ironic that subsection U of the zoning ordinance would require dimensional standard, setback standards that are higher for a religious land use than it would be for an industrial factory in an LI zoning district or in any zoning district, because that subsection U applies universally throughout the township for any religious land use. applies universally throughout the township for any religious land use. At this point, our legal counsel is still evaluating the applicability of subsection U and whether it's compliant with federal law. There's a federal law that was adopted in the year 2000 called the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act. And part of that law prohibits local governments from imposing or implementing a land use regulation in a manner that treats a religious assembly or institution on less-than-equal terms with a non-religious assembly or institution. In this case, religious land uses are special land uses in LI zoning district and religious land uses can be special land uses in zoning districts. However, also, as special land uses in the LI zoning district are separately in a separate subsection, it lists as special land uses, assembly halls, display halls, convention centers, banquet halls, and similar places of assembly. And for those other places of assembly, there's not any applicable standards like Section 6.02U that apply a heightened standard of setback or review for those non-religious places of assembly. So, this is not unique to Canton's ordinance. Many municipal zoning ordinances have regulations that apply to religious land uses and some of them are defensible, some are not. And this federal law, it's been subject to a lot of federal litigation, so since it was adopted in 2000, there's been a lot of case law since that has changed how communities can apply them. So, the zoning text that was written at the time that it was written may have, that may have been defensible. At this point, it's undergoing another legal evaluation just to determine in the current time whether these standards are applicable. If they are, the applicant can apply to the zoning board of appeals for variances from those three-dimensional standards as a process separate from the special land use process. So, if after the legal review is complete of those questions, we can make a determination of whether there should be a separate application to the zoning board of appeals for those three items. The next item that we want to discuss is parking. Based on the floor plan and the number of prayer spaces, the zoning ordinance requires 61 parking spaces. There are 82 parking spaces proposed, some of which are new due to restriping. The maximum parking allowed by the zoning ordinance is 67 spaces and the ordinance allows the planning commission to consider a modification to increase parking spaces above that maximum. Based on the nature of the use, we recommend permitting up to the 82 parking spaces proposed because peak demands during prayer times may warrant additional parking. Additionally, and this may be a future consideration, there are some undeveloped areas on the site that are farther on the east side of the site. If the future demand were to warrant it, there is room on the east side of the site to construct additional parking spaces if demand warranted that for this use. So, there is area to make the parking even larger. For the loading area, there are existing loading areas that are proposed to be removed because there won't be any truck traffic anticipated. The Section 4.02 of the zoning ordinance has standards for loading spaces and it allows the planning commission to modify that standard based on expected deliveries. Because religious land uses are not noted in Section 4.02 and they don't need many deliveries, we recommend waiving the loading space requirement. If there are any loading times, it would be most likely smaller vehicles that can accommodate throughout the parking lot as striped. For the architecture of the building, there are no changes proposed to the exterior. The existing building is a mix of brick and split-faced block. The brick areas are concentrated on the front west side of the building and on the western end of the south side. Any changes to the building, if they do take place, would have to comply with Section 26.06 of the zoning ordinance. There's a landscape plan that was previously approved for the frontage landscaping, the general site landscaping, and foundation landscaping. There are no changes proposed by the applicant, but if necessary, we would recommend updating that landscaping on the site if necessary to comply with the previous plan. The same goes for the lighting. There's existing lighting on the site which is based on a previously approved site plan. Any changes to the lighting must comply with Section 2.13 of the zoning ordinance. We recommend that any non-compliant fixtures that are not full cutoff fixtures be replaced with compliant shielded fixtures. For signage, there's no current or proposed ground signage and the existing wall signage would most likely be replaced. The signage is reviewed separately by the Building and Inspection Services Division, which must comply with Article 6A of the zoning ordinance. For the dumpster enclosure, there's an existing dumpster enclosure to the east on the rear side of the building. The dumpster enclosure has some existing non-conformities, but there are no changes proposed, so the dumpster enclosure can continue as originally approved. If there are any changes to that dumpster enclosure or its location, then it must comply with the zoning ordinance. For utilities, the site's currently serviced by Water and Sanitary Sewer Service. And for stormwater management, the site drains to a stormwater pond located on the parcel to the east. These stormwater ponds located on a separate parcel, they have many sites that drain to them, so it's a regional stormwater system. If there are any changes proposed in the future to the contributing sites or to the ponds, then Wayne County and/or MDOT review would be required. Finally, we look at the special land use standards of the zoning ordinance which are in Section 27.03C. There are several standards to review for special land uses and based on our review, we find that the site meets all the criteria of special land use review provided that any conditions of approval for compliance with the previously approved site plan are met as well as any other requirements to comply with the zoning ordinance. We looked at the surrounding area and determined that the proposed religious institution use is compatible with the adjacent industrial uses. The adjacent uses to the north and west are buildings without outdoor storage. The adjacent use to the south does have outdoor storage, but that outdoor storage is screened with dense vegetation. The building setbacks also meet the minimum requirements of the LI light industrial zoning I won't go through each and every standard, but some of the ones that tend to jump out for any special land uses, one is access management. The site has access to DeWitt Road, which is a paved county road. It's a cul-de-sac road through an existing driveway. DeWitt Road is accessed by Michigan Avenue and both roads have sufficient capacity for traffic generated by the use, which oftentimes tend to take place outside of your peak AM and PM times. DeWitt Road is a cul-de-sac road. It's lightly traveled. There is some heavy truck traffic there, but in terms of capacity of the road, in terms of number of trips, there is capacity in DeWitt Road. We don't find where the proposed use would unreasonably interfere with or discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent land or buildings. However, it's a special land use. We have a public hearing scheduled for this evening and all property owners within 300 feet received a mailed notice. So, as of the beginning of this meeting, we haven't received any comments from any adjacent property owners on the proposed application. And during the public hearing, I guess we'll determine if there are any comments from the public or from any neighbors. Next, we find that although it's contiguous to industrial uses, the proposed religious institution is not incompatible because the uses to the north and west are predominantly indoor uses and the outdoor storage area to the south is screened. And there's a farther setback from the southern lot line to the building itself, so there's a vegetation buffer and then a couple rows of parking and then the building, so there's a pretty good separation distance there. And finally, the proposed use is expected to enhance the well-being and welfare of the township and is not expected to result in excessive duplication of a use. Therefore, staff's recommendation is approval of the special land use for a religious institution at 4801 DeWitt Road as illustrated on the special land use plans for the reasons stated in our analysis, including approval of up to 82 parking spaces pursuant to Section 4.01 C6 of the zoning ordinance and waiving the loading space requirement pursuant to Section 4.02B7 of the zoning ordinance and subject to all state, county, and township requirements and subject to the following three conditions. First, updating the landscaping on the site to comply with the previously approved landscape plan, subject to acceptable species replacements. Second, replacing any light fixtures that don't comply with Section 2.13 of the zoning ordinance with compliant light fixtures. And third, making any plan revisions required by the planning division staff to comply with the zoning ordinance. That concludes our staff report and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Entertaining a motion to open the public hearing. Both of you.
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Lee and support by Commissioner Foster. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Project sponsors, would you like to add anything to what Patrick has already said? Please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Muhammad Abdi, president of Buhari Islamic Center.
My name is Zishan Jalali. Yeah, I'm also one of the representatives for the...
Thank you. All right. Do you want to add anything to what Patrick said?
He did a good job. Patrick is, from day one, we had a good relationship. We met about six months old. But, you know, it's clear there, if you visit it, very much isolated from, it doesn't even the one hear any voices, the adjacent. There's three, two adjacent immediately companies there, but it's very private. We plan to become harmonious with the surrounding there and I'll tell you one thing, they work nine to five and most of our activities after that.
Okay.
So, it's pretty much empty at that time and so, yeah, we feel very good about it. Canton is the destination of moving in Michigan now. Number one destination I would think. I don't know if there's another one. So, many Muslims are moving as well, so we need more facilities to take care of the spiritual needs so that they become proactive, value-added to the American society. And the children specifically, we have very much thought about the youth to learn some of good morals and, you know, to be very stable and continue to shine in this country.
Great, thank you.
And just one thing I would like to add, that in that, in the southern part of the Canton, there's no mosque, as you know. So, that would be a good addition, you know, over there and it is part of, you know, the business district is there, you know, we see Walmart, we see different, it would be a convenient location for people to come and fulfill their needs of worship over there. It is going to, as Muhammad Sheikh Abdul Ghani said, you know, it is a good addition. So, we feel good about it and we appreciate, you know, the Canton township to, you know, accept our special land use application and providing positive, you know, their recommendations for the special land use application. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Would anybody from the audience like to make any comments about this project? No?
I'll move, a few clearings, gosh.
You got it.
Move to close the public hearing, ma'am chair.
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Lee to close the public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right.
Was there a motion to open the public hearing earlier?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks.
Yes, thank you. It was Commissioner Lee and who supported it? Oh, Commissioner Foster, yeah. Okay, I'm going to start with Commissioner Watkins.
Yeah, just real quick, I know, DeWitt, I've probably driven past it 10,000 times and didn't know it was there, right? Just signage, did you have any plans for signage for the mosque or to at least give some direction at Michigan on how to get there or if there's something that would point people to that inlet, yeah?
Yes, we're working with the architect. Yes, we will have some signage that will eventually tell people that the mosque is there. We have a website and the other mosques, we are educating them that it's here, so it's slowly getting to be popular amongst the residents of Canton, right? And yeah, yes, sometimes people that are just traveling and they're worried about missing their prayer, this will be, and that's why we named it Islamic Center, because many times they say, closest Islamic center, you know, you go to Google and then it just tells you it's there. So, it's a very convenient place and we will, yeah, we will put a sign there as well.
Thank you, ma'am chair.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Singh.
Thank you, ma'am chair. Patrick, you said we have a township attorney looking into some laws which can affect the approval of this development, right?
Yeah, and that's currently under review.
Same problem we have, Courtney.
Yeah, I apologize, this actually has been on our desk and we've been kind of going back and forth, but I would say from a cursory perspective, we are leaning towards, I'm going to say from a cursory perspective, we are leaning towards the fact that the regulations addressed by Patrick in his memo should not be applied to the Islamic Center, so we will be adjusting our recommendation and we will have a full memo to you guys on that matter before the end of the week.
Thank you.
So, my only question would be, ma'am chair, do we wait for that memo before we vote on this or we go through it?
I think that, my understanding, Courtney, correct me if I'm wrong, is that that only would impact whether they need to get zoning variances or not, which we don't grant, so I don't think it matters for us.
All right, that's the only question I had.
Okay, thank you.
I just had a question and this comes from, I'm looking at prayer for 184 and if you have 184, what I'm thinking is, are there enough facilities? And I'm not interfering with your design, you know what you're doing, but I just see one, two, three, four stalls.
Four toilet rooms?
Yeah, and I'm just curious, is that enough?
So, this 184, usually what happens, people come, it is at, you know, usually in the regular prayers, you will find 30 people, 40 people, you know, less than that. So, that's why, you know, we find this enough. And 184 is the capacity, right? It doesn't mean that it is going to reach that capacity. And if, and so that's why this is, we think that this is sufficient on from the, you know, the facilities which are there. And in case, you know, sometimes what happens, you know, we like, you may have noticed, in the mosque on Friday, on the Fridays, they have multiple sessions, you know, some people, you know, cannot, due to their work, you know, work, I mean, job hours, they're not, they don't have the time slot, so that's why they distribute. So, that capacity, 184, which you see there, it won't reach that. And people usually, when they come, they come prepared because there are, I would like to, you know, explain, you know, that when they come and, you know, Sheikh is my teacher as well and I'm just a student, that when you come prepared for your religious need for offering, you know, your prayers with ablution already, you get more blessings, you get more good rewards. So, people try to conserve, you know, the resources which are there in the mosque or in the religious places of worship because they would like to contribute. So, from that perspective, we have seen, you know, many mosques are here, for example, Bilal, Masjid Bilal is there, we have this Muslim community, Western Subur, MCWS are there, so they have similar kind of, they have, they are more capacity, but they have similar kind of facilities, you know, for ablution and all that available. So, we, based on our experience, which is, which spans for many years, this sounds to be sufficient and people would like to get more rewards, they would come prepared, they would like to conserve the resources of the Islamic Center, yeah.
This, and I'm not, I'm just saying, as you get older, it becomes, I'm just saying, you know, but I don't want to interfere with your design, but that might be a consideration because I'm looking at it, you actually could do a lot more if you wanted without any problem because you've got enough room, you know? And one, I'll give you an example, 100 people, you've got four stalls for men, four stalls for women in many religious places and that's just 100. Here you've got 184. I'm just asking. I don't want to interfere with the design, that's not my thing, but I just was curious, that's all.
Right, yes.
184 prayer spaces, but like you're saying, you're not using all of them, but I'm just saying, as you get older, sometimes, you know.
We'll consider that. Things can always be redesigned again and of course, going through the proper channels, yes. We will, we will take that comment and we'll consider it.
That's all I...
All right. Commissioner Foster, I'm sorry, yeah, Commissioner Foster, geez.
This seems like a great project. I think it's a great location as well. I don't have any questions, but thank you.
Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner Cruz.
Just a couple of things. Can you go to C2, the site plan? I just.
Trying, it wants to crash, but. No crashing.
So just, yeah, right, right where your cursor is, I just noticed it's a dead end. So if somebody parks there, you at least need a hammerhead or wipe out two spaces so you could circulate through the lot, just those four spaces right there. Or you could put a hammerhead in so the last space can back out. But the problem is, if you drive to that and you see there's no spaces, how do you get out now, you know?
Oh, I got it.
You have to back out, which would be dangerous.
Yeah, you'd have to back all the way out, which is not efficient, just something to look at, you know? And the dumpster, I mean, the dumpster is tight for a dumpster to access that, that turn. It was easier when, when there were no spaces, that's why the dumpster is right there. But it's just something to look at. And then the propane tank, is that staying or is that being removed?
It has been removed already, it's not there anymore, the propane tank, yeah.
And so, Patrick, the process after tonight, this is special land use, then it'll come back. It'll also go to ZBA, is that right?
Possibly not ZBA. Whether it does or doesn't, it would be based on just the dimensional setback and lot area criteria of the zoning ordinance. For the planning commission, this would be the only planning commission review because there aren't any site development changes in terms of building additions or repaving or anything major. Any kind of changes to the site are really painting within the existing lot to meet dimensional standards for parking spaces, which they would be able to do without planning commission review because it's kind of an administrative function. So this would be the planning commission's review of the plan.
And then the improvements that you suggested as part of the conditions, it'll be administrative through your department, is that right?
Right. So we would look at the previous photometric plan and lighting plan. And if light fixtures are swapped out, we would have to get updated photometrics to make sure that the light illumination still meets the standards of the ordinance. And same with landscaping, so if the landscape plan is old, there may be some species that were planted back then that may not be appropriate to replant. So species substitutions may be a good thing in those areas where planting would be required.
Good. And then just the last thing, you said Dewitt Road is county, it's not a private roadway?
Yeah, we looked at the road jurisdiction, it came up as a county road.
Okay, it's in bad shape, just, it's in terrible shape, figures, it's Wayne County. So just to let you guys know, you're in for a bumpy ride. That's all I got.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Janowski. Can you read, use your mic?
One fixture short for code for your facility, given that 184 occupancy. I don't have any problems, I like, I like the idea.
Thank you. Yeah, I think this will be a nice addition to our community. I have no problem with it, other than I share Alan's concerns about the parking safety and just striping and that kind of thing. But I think it'll be nice and I support it, so anybody want to make a motion?
I'll move, ma'am chair. I move to recommend approval of the special land use for a religious institution at 4801 Dewitt Road on parcel number, parcel 134-03-0099-000. As illustrated on the special land use plans, as the application meets the special land use criteria of section 27.03c of the zoning ordinance pursuant to the information and plans provided and staff's analysis of section 27.03c, including approval of up to 82 parking spaces pursuant to section 4.01(c)(6) and waiving the loading space requirement pursuant to section 4.02(b)(7), subject to all state, county, and township requirements and subject to the following conditions. One, updating the landscaping on the site to comply with the previously approved landscape plan, subject to acceptable species replacements. And two, replacing any light fixtures that do not comply with section 2.13 with compliant light fixtures. And three, making any plan revisions required by planning division staff to comply with the zoning ordinance.
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Foster. Any further discussion? Commissioner Lee, would you please call the vote?
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Janowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee, yes. Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins.
Yes.
Commissioner or chairperson Zubor.
Yes, thank you, motion carries. Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Appreciate, thank you. God bless.
The next steps for this application is, the next available board meeting is on Tuesday, August 26th. So this would tentatively be scheduled for the board meeting for action on the application.
Thank you. All right. And we do not have any old business, so we're moving right into new business. Item three is number 129-dir-8705. Comerica Bank would like, like us to consider site plan amendment for their parcel at 129-99-0002-710, which is also known as 45420 Michigan Ave. The property is located on the north side of Michigan Avenue between North Canton Center Road and Old Canton Center Road. Proposed parking lot replacement and updates to landscaping and lighting. Patrick, tell us all about it, please.
Sure, thank you. The applicant is proposing to repave the parking and circulation areas and make some site changes. Some of the site changes include removing 13 parking spaces, narrowing the drive aisles, increasing the landscape area, updating the landscape plan, adding a connecting sidewalk between Michigan Avenue and the building entrance, updating the site lighting and some other minor exterior improvements. The original plan was approved in 2001 and the site was developed shortly thereafter in accordance with that plan. The proposed plan changes are relatively minor, but they, they will update the site. One area that's significant is removing some of the excess parking. The applicant proposes to reduce the number of parking from 32 down to 19 spaces. And although it's fewer spaces than are required by the zoning ordinance, based on our review of the ITE Parking Generation Manual as well as aerial photos of the site, we recommend approval of reducing the parking requirement down to 19 parking spaces. We've looked at several aerial photos, looks like 34 aerial photos of the site from 2014 to 2025. And in no instance did the number of parked cars exceed 10 in looking at those aerial photos. So banks, and we've seen recent site plans in the last few years where less parking is warranted. Most people are doing their banking through the drive-through or on the cell phones or computers. So the in-person visits to the bank are not as much as they were when the site plan was originally approved. So reducing the number of parking spaces is a good thing. It'll be less to maintain, less to plow and reseal and restripe, et cetera. And it'll add more green space to the site, more landscaping. So overall, a great benefit for reducing impervious surfaces and increasing the green space. For the traffic circulation, there is a drive west side of the building. It's supposed to be a one-way drive where exiting vehicles from the canopy area go west and then southward. But it's wide enough for two cars. So it's really overdeveloped as a drive, it should be reduced. And the applicant proposes to reduce that from 6, 26 feet down to 16 feet. So that additional 10 feet will be added with green space. So this narrow green strip here, that's too narrow to plant anything right now, that'll be widened and there will be trees in that area along that, along that boulevarded area. And it'll look really good. So reducing the parking, narrowing the drive, that's one area where there's going to be more landscaping and it's going to look better. There is currently no sidewalk that connects the Michigan Avenue sidewalk to the building itself. So Michigan Avenue has sidewalks, building has sidewalks adjacent, but nothing to connect it. The applicants are proposing to add a sidewalk in the southeast corner so that someone from Michigan Avenue can walk into the site and do so by sidewalk. The light poles and light fixtures will be replaced, they will be compliant with the zoning ordinance. One recommendation of ours is that all fixtures be not adjustable so that they'll be downward facing only. But that's a relatively minor recommendation that can be changed on a cut sheet. There are no changes proposed to the architecture of the building or the canopy. There's no changes proposed to the signage. And then finally, for garbage removal, it's currently done by rolling carts and that method is proposed to continue. If there's ever a need for a dumpster in the future, they would have to comply with the zoning ordinance at that time for the dumpster enclosure. So that includes staff's review. This would otherwise be an administrative type of review based on the scale of the changes, except that the applicant is reducing the number of parking spaces below the minimum required by the zoning ordinance. So that's a determination that can only be made by the planning commission or the zoning board of appeals. So concurrent with the regular application for the site plan review for the site changes, we're referring this to the planning commission for review of the plan and the parking space modification. So our recommendation is approval of the site plan amendment, including approval of 19 parking spaces, subject to all state, county, and township requirements. And with that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Project sponsor, would you like to add anything? I'm making an educated guess as to who the project sponsor is. Tell us your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Tim Wood with Nowack and Frowes Engineers. I'm the consultant engineer on this project. My address is 46777 Woodward, Pontiac, Michigan. I appreciate the thoroughness of the staff's review. Thank you, Mr. Sloan. And I appreciate the opportunity to present here in front of the board today. I find it to be an excellent opportunity and I personally find it very intriguing how invested each one of you are in the community. So thank you for your thoroughness in that. No additional comments to what Mr. Sloan had provided, he provided a very thorough review. Just looking to replace the parking lot and kind of get something that's a little bit more in line with what's needed for the bank.
Support that, that's for sure.
And answer any questions if needed.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I think this, this commission appreciates any reductions in parking.
It's an understatement.
More green space is always welcome. So anybody have any questions or thoughts, I just kind of open up the floor, okay?
Okay, so you're reversing the traffic direction before it was the other way, is that correct?
So that's a very good question and yes, that is what's shown on the plans. However, that is going to be a revision that we're going to make to the plans. That was.
I was curious.
Yeah, that was.
I banked there, that's why, I'm curious.
The traffic flow as it exists today is a little anti-normal. As in your driver's side, when you're pulling through, so it basically pull in through the, it's reverse what's shown on here. You pull in through the left side of the site and then you enter and then you pull in. So your driver's side is actually facing away from the tellers, which is why we were considering reversing it. And then also you have your queuing space available on the right side is more than what it would be on the left side. So that's why they considered it. However, Comerica has decided that to revert or keep it as it was or is currently.
Sounds good, that's all I got.
So what we see is what is coming? I'm sorry.
That's, so we were exploring the option of reversing it. What is going to be is what it is today. It's entering on the west side and then circulating clockwise around the site to the north and east.
So that driveway will be, the arrow will go up.
Reverse of what's showing.
Yeah.
Got it.
Okay. Anyone else from the commission?
No questions, ma'am chair.
Anyone want to make a motion?
Oh, ma'am chair, I move to approve the site plan amendment for Comerica Bank on parcel 129-99-0002-710 at 45420 Michigan Avenue, including approval of 19 parking spaces pursuant to section 4.01(c)(6) of the zoning ordinance, subject to all state, county, and township requirements.
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Lee. Any further discussion? All right, Commissioner Lee, would you please call the vote?
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Janowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee, yes. Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins.
Yes.
Chairperson Zubor.
Yes, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and our last item on the agenda is 08-zcc-8717, The Yard. We're considering parking lot modification for a proposed indoor recreation use on parcel number 000, I'm sorry, 008-01-0003-302, also known as 7757 Ronda Drive. The property is located on the west side of Ronda Drive between Joy Road and Copperneck Road. Patrick, tell us all about it, please.
Sure. In this case, the applicant has applied for a certificate of zoning compliance for an indoor recreation use for a baseball training facility for a part of the existing building at 7757 Ronda Drive. It's located on the west side of Ronda Drive and north of Copperneck Road. The existing building is just under 16,000 square feet and the existing contractor's establishment will continue to operate within 11,175 square feet. And the proposed indoor recreation use will operate within 4,800 square feet. The proposed indoor rec use is a permitted use in the LI Light Industrial Zoning District. And there are several areas within this light industrial district, within this complex, where there are some indoor recreation uses. Indoor recreation uses can be great uses to have in industrial buildings because they have higher ceilings, open floor plans. But whenever there's a building or part of a building converted from a industrial use to a recreation use, the most frequent element that comes up is parking because the parking requirements for rec uses are a lot higher than they are for industrial uses. So the reason that this application is before the planning commission is because there's a request for a parking lot modification. Based on the existing and proposed uses, there are 57 parking spaces required by the ordinance and the site has 30 parking spaces. In our, the parking section in our staff analysis on page two, we detail some of the ordinance standards and the calculations for the existing parking spaces, which are 30, and then the contractor use plus the indoor rec use comes up to 57. Section 4.01(c)(6) of the ordinance allows the planning commission to modify the parking requirements. And in looking at 11 aerial photos of the site between 2023 and 2025, the site doesn't show more than 10 vehicles in the lot and usually has five or fewer vehicles there. The existing business has indoor parking for its service vehicles. Therefore, its vehicles can be parked indoors during peak times for the indoor rec use. In looking at the Institute of Traffic Engineers Parking Generation Manual, it estimates that a health or fitness club has an average parking peak demand of 5.2 spaces per 1,000 square feet. And the 85th percentile is eight and a half spaces per 1,000 square feet, based on 15 parking studies for indoor rec uses. Therefore, based on the floor area of 4,800 square feet, the manual's average demand is estimated to be 25 spaces and the 85th percentile demand is estimated to be 41 spaces. Because a baseball training facility in an industrial building is likely to generate less parking than a dance facility or something that has a lot of people, especially something in a commercial district, the parking demand for a recreation use like a baseball use is likely to be 25 or fewer spaces at one time, especially a use like a baseball use in an industrial district where it's not going to generate a lot of consumer traffic. It's not like it's on a major thoroughfare like Ford Road or Michigan Avenue. Also, there are other recreational uses in existing industrial buildings on Ronda Drive and we're not aware of any parking shortages. Therefore, we recommend approval of the parking lot modification as requested. Also, section 4.01(c)(6) allows the planning commission to require that construction of parking spaces necessary for future traffic be deferred until the need for projected parking is justified. This requirement would arise if there were illegal parking outside of the approved parking spaces or if there is parking overflow. If there is parking overflow, the most likely remedy would be for the property owner to obtain a shared parking agreement with an adjacent or nearby owner, which is fairly common in a lot of cases and which the planning commission can approve. So staff's recommendation is approval of the 30 existing parking spaces as shown on the site layout plan for the existing. on the site layout plan for the existing contractor establishment use, and the proposed indoor recreation use, subject to all state, county, and township requirements, and provided that if the parking demand exceeds capacity, then the owner must construct additional parking spaces pursuant to section four point zero one C six of the ordinance, or obtain a shared parking agreement with a qualifying property owner pursuant to section four point zero one B five of the ordinance. So that concludes our staff report, and I'll be happy to take any questions, and Commissioner Singh actually is an owner of the property and can speak to this.
Madam Chair, first I would like to recuse myself, because I'm the owner of the property.
Okay.
Patrick, do I keep on sitting here, or I need to go and sit with the audience?
I'm not really sure if it makes a difference.
Thank you. Because, sit, sit on the low chair. Excellent. The project sponsor, I'm guessing that would be you? Would you like to add anything? All right, please come up, tell us your name and address for the record.
Hey, everybody, my name is Ryan Fitzgerald, my address is four two one two six Ross Common Street in Northville, Michigan. The one thing I want to add, or there's a few things I want to add, the business hours of nine one one restoration, their office hours are from eight to four P M, Monday through Friday. Our business will not start until five P M, and then will end at ten P M on Monday through Friday, and then we will operate from ten A M to eight P M on the weekends. So even with the two businesses operating out of the same building, we have totally different business hours, and we'll accommodate that way. The other thing I want to say is we're not a training center that's having multiple teams coming in at a high volume, we are training more on a one-to-one level. We're going to have four cages, so that'll allow for eight trainers to operate at once, no more than two kids per group will be allowed per each hour block, so I don't personally anticipate more than sixteen parking spots being used, give or take. And oftentimes in this industry, parents will drop their children off, and then come and pick them up at the end of their session, so it doesn't necessarily hold a parking spot for the whole time that they're there.
That's.
Have any questions for me?
Anybody?
I just want to know, what, what are you doing? You're training kids?
Baseball and softball training, anywhere from ages eight to professional.
Batting cages?
Correct.
Okay. Pitching machines?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. I might want to check that out.
You're more than welcome to, I'd love to have you.
Have a future in baseball?
No. No, I just.
Can be.
Awesome. Anybody else?
Thank you, guys, so much.
All right, thank you. Thank you, all right, could, I'm entertaining a motion then, if no one else.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the thirty existing parking spaces, as illustrated on the parking site layout plan for the existing contractor's establishment use, and the proposed indoor recreation use at seventy-seven fifty-seven Rhonda Drive, parcel zero zero eight dash zero one dash zero 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 three dash three zero two, subject to all state, county, and township requirements, provided that if the parking demand exceeds capacity, then the owner must construct additional parking spaces pursuant to section four point oh one C six, obtain a shared parking agreement with a qualifying property owner pursuant to section four point oh one B five.
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Watkins, who reads motions so beautifully, and support by Commissioner Foster, not to be outdone, she supports very beautifully, so. All right, any further discussion? All right, Commissioner Lee, would you please call the vote?
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Janowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Singh abstained. Commissioner Watkins.
Yes.
And Chairperson Zubor.
Yes. Motion carries. Very good. Best of luck.
Yeah.
All right. Any, that is the last item on our agenda, right? Yes.
Yep.
Awesome. Anybody have anything to chat about, or shall we adjourn?
Madam Chair, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Oh, wait, you're not on the agenda, ma'am.
No, no, I just have a thing. I have staff stuff.
Oh, staff stuff.
Staff stuff.
Okay.
Oh, staff stuff.
Yeah, so I have a very long presentation.
Oh, there is, I'm sorry, there is a miscellaneous section here.
I'm in the miscellaneous section tonight.
Snuck in.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to let the planning commission know that, you know, after we've adopted our master plan, now we're starting to do some more concentrated planning efforts, subarea plans, specialty plans, and one of them is a public transit plan. We'll give you more information as we go along, but we're doing outreach, we're doing a community survey, stakeholder discussions, so this project is going to be coming before the planning commission in the next few, few meetings, so just get, get, get those brains ready for more planning stuff, so. That is all.
Okay, we've been on, we've been notified that we need to keep our brains going, okay. Hope we can do that, I don't know. I hope we're up to it. All right.
Motion adjourn, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right, we have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Watkins, and support by Commissioner Lee. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Awesome.